Poor Ally, Ally's now the leader.
We'll follow your lead. All right. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you take Ben here and we'll take our picture with Ben this way? Is this your last one?
Yeah.
All right, right here, ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Do you guys want to tell us how you got selected to come tonight? No?
They're all on top.
They're all real lucky.
Last moment, everybody canceled, so it's supposed to be here.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you so much for coming. Okay, if I could, I would introduce a motion to approve the agenda tonight.
Madam President, I move that we approve the agenda with the following amendments. D1, additional certified classified personal actions for consideration, item number E-3.
Okay, do we have any discussion second? You're good. If we have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. All who have signed, great. We'll move on to recognition. Steve, are you doing the first recognition of selected board member that participated in the Kansas Association of School Boards Leadership Academy training?
So, last month was school board recognition month, and another thing that we do, we pointed out that last month, the pay for school board members is pretty low. Some elected offices actually have pay, but for school board members, they don't receive any kind of compensation at all. And often, they donate extra time in participating in trainings and things that the Kansas Association of School Boards or other groups do across the state. So, Kansas Association of School Boards does do a recognition program for board members who participate in enough training, a certain number of hours. And so, we actually have three board members who are recognized, but two of them aren't able to be here tonight. But Dana Nanega receives Level 1 Honor Roll recognition from the Kansas Association of School Boards. And Tim Cruz receives Honor Roll Level 2.
I need more training.
And the other two are Laura Borison, Jean Clifford. And I think Laura will be here, but was running a little late, so.
Okay, so we'll move on to the recognition of Russ Tedwell from the Garden City High School for hosting the Kansas 5A, 6A State Debate Tournament.
I'd like to introduce first Russ Tedwell. Last month, on the 11th and 12th of January, we had the opportunity for the first time in almost a decade to host 5 and 6A State Debates. If you remember back to the 11th and 12th, it was quite the experience with all the snow and all the stuff going on. So, I'd like to recognize Russ Tedwell and his staff for everything they did. I'll let Russ speak in a second. I see John Geist is here. I'd also like to thank John and his crew for keeping all the roadways clear, the paths up to the school clear during State Debate. And Mr. Curran at the city for all that they did to make sure roads in front of the high school and to the hotels were all clear. They did a great job of knowing State Debate was in town and making sure all those roadways were clear. But especially Russ Tedwell and his staff, from everybody that I talked to, it's one of the best State Debates that we've had. The facilities and the location and just what these guys were able to do was amazing. And once again, we host just another amazing event at Garden City High School. And I'll let Russ kind of fill in the details.
Hello. I want to introduce the team. Steve and Drew said that you wanted to recognize me, and I said, "I'm not doing that without the people who really made it work." I get a lot of the attention, but these folks wore themselves out that week and for two weeks before. And so, I'll just kind of tell you what they all did. Casey Copeland and Cody Morrison took care of logistics in the building for us. Cody had a master key. They both said at the end of the weekend that they really wished that they had run some kind of pedometer or something because they felt like they got more than their steps in that weekend. Sean Ashley and Shelby McNutt took care of running our community judge interaction. So, they took care of organizing all of that, deciding who was going where. One of our board members judged, what, three or four debates that weekend? And so, we had community people, all over the community that Sean and Shelby interacted with. And that became a more monumental task on Saturday morning when we started to have people canceled because of weather, and they got people to come back. And I didn't have to worry about any of that. They made that all work for me. Dana Johnson down on the end, she and then she drafted her mother. They took care of hospitality for the weekend for the 49 or 50 schools that were here, for coaches, judges, all of the people that were with them. And I didn't, it's rare at a State Debate Tournament not to hear somebody complain about hospitality. We didn't get any complaints. We had people saying, "I can't believe how well you're taking care of us." This team, along with Alonzo Pena, who's another debate assistant and is not here tonight, they made that work that weekend. Alonzo took our kids and coached them all weekend so that I could run the 6A 2 Speaker Tournament. Sean and Shelby made sure that I didn't have to interact with judges so that I could be the 6A State Manager. It took the team, and it really took the community. Drew said thanks to John and Sam Curran at the city. I know that a lot of phone calls were made on our behalf on Friday when that first snow flew fell, and I can't even, I've been amazed by, I was amazed all weekend at the way things just were made to work that were way above and beyond my control. It was a community event. We did it really well, and I still am getting congratulations and thank yous from other schools. So, thank you as a board, as a school district for letting us do this. That's, we took a day off of school. It was no small task. I mean, we took a day off of school at the high school. We had crews running extra in overtime. I mean, the custodial staff at the high school went above and beyond. I got a lot of thank yous and a lot of credit from coaches. This is the community, and these are the people who made it happen.
Thank you for coming. Just as a person that got to see it, it was amazing. So, if you ever have the chance to check out an event like that, the kids are amazing. It was fantastic. Thank you. Thank you. I'm glad you brought you through with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work. Thank you. Thanks for all your work, all your steps.
Thanks for all your work. And congratulations.
Before Mr. Tedwell gets out of here, I would like to, Madam Vice President, I'd like to add one thing. So, we do appreciate the work of that entire team, but we appreciate the leadership that Mr. Tedwell provides for our debate program year after year. I think this is your third time you've hosted?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Pretty phenomenal, but the way the community was represented, the way the high school was represented, the way our school district was represented was because over a year ago, Mr. Tedwell took this on, and he has worked steadily, and he's going to share a lot of that credit, but there's a lot of credit too that needs to go his way. And Russ, we want you to understand how much we really truly appreciate that. Thank you for all that you do for our kids.
Okay, get to recognize Jenna Rysik for receiving the Life Changer of the Year Award.
So, tonight, I am honored to get to tell you a little bit about the award that Jenna won earlier this year. Back in September, Glenda sent an email that talked about this Life Changer Award, and I thought, hmm, I bet I can figure out somebody that would deserve that. And they were looking at school psychologists and counselors, and I have the best school psychologists and counselors in my building, so I nominated both of them. And it's, the Life Changer Award is through the National Life Group, and they put out an award that people can nominate deserving educators. And so, I nominated Jenna, and I got a phone call. And, you know, usually running into a phone call, I thought, not much of it, but he said, "You have someone that won in your building." And I was like, "Are you kidding?" And he said, "No." And I said, "Well, which one?" Because I nominated two, and he said Jenna. Rysik was the Spotlight Award winner. And the Spotlight Award winner is the first nominee for the entire year when they kick off this award program. So Jenna was nominated for several reasons. First off, when the district decided to put school psychologists in our building, that made a huge difference. They're in our building, they can see what's going on with our kiddos, they can get right in, give the teachers some valuable help with, "How, what do I need to do with these kids?" She's plugged herself in in behavior plans. So, there are days that our kids come to her for their jobs. She helps on our BLT and on our SAT team. She's just really immersed herself in our building. And so, I felt like she was very deserving of that award. And with that award, there's a $5,000 check that goes along with it. Jenna received $2,500, and the school received the other 25. And with the $2,500, we added on to our sensory room, and we bought a closet full of items for our teachers to check out for our kids. So, it really was a big benefit to our school as well. But Jenna's very deserving winner, and so then we had a big assembly, and they had someone videotape it, and they're making a video that hopefully will be on Facebook soon. And then they had two presenters come from Dallas that actually gave her an award. So, it was quite an honor.
That's fantastic. I can tell you love all the attention. Well, thank you. Thank you for all the attention. All right, well, this is a great night. We get to do more recognitions, lots of recognitions tonight. Melissa Hensley, a teacher at RNC High School for obtaining the National Board Certification.
So, I get to introduce to you guys and recognize Mrs. Melissa Hensley. She has recently earned her National Board Certification. This is a credential, it's the highest teaching, most respected teaching credential a teacher in the United States can earn. It's a huge time commitment, it's a money commitment. It was developed to develop and recognize and retain excellent teachers, as Melissa is. She is a mother, she's a wife, she is one of our FFA coaches, she helps with our clay target team. She has taught environmental science, you're going to talk, animal meat science, plant science, intro to ag science, and wildlife and natural resources. And so, a huge undertaking. I've known lots of teachers that have looked into becoming National Board Certified. I've known some that have started it and not finished it because it's such a commitment. And so, for her to be one of the few I know in our district and in Kansas that have reached this level, I think is very deserving of your recognition. So, I'm happy to introduce her, and if you have any questions about the process, I'm sure she willingly shares what all was involved.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your time commitment and all the work that you've put into this honor, but also in the school district. That's pretty amazing, and thank you.
Okay, yeah, I need to brag on this one because I have a freshman in her class, and she's already making a list of what other classes she wants to take.
Good. We'll go over those.
And her favorite day of the week is adulting day.
Oh, yeah.
I need to brag. She's been teaching them basic checks and balances, bank accounts, insurance, I don't know what else there is.
Today was credit cards.
Credit cards. So, I mean, that's just above and beyond and what every kid needs to know, so.
Well, thank you.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
She's missing out every day.
Yeah. I've forgotten that stuff. Congratulations.
Eleven years.
Awesome. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Vice President, I might just interject. Melissa is one of four teachers that have earned that recognition in our district, and it's been my industry here.
Wow, that's awesome. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Really great.
Thank you.
So, we will now bring up Charles Stone for their building presentation.
It's not Charles Stone. Michelle Thompson.
Just stand here. Just stand there and breathe.
We have one shy one over here.
We're going to get started. We have a video to start ours with that was produced by one of our teachers who's working on her admin degree, and then Michelle put the rest of this together, but while we're waiting, can I introduce our staff that showed up tonight? We have Stephanie Arteaga, she's one of our fifth grade teachers. Roger Reed, sixth grade science. Rebecca Plude, sixth grade math, sorry. Katie Han, PE. Yvonne Farmion, she does sixth grade language arts. Katherine Akapov, fifth grade language arts. Mallory Hernandez, sixth grade language arts. Cody McCarty, sixth grade language arts, he's been with us three weeks. And Rhonda Soder, instructional coach, and Amy Rix, artosa. Michelle Thompson does sixth grade math and a lot of other, I don't know. She takes the lead when we need her to, so. Okay, I'll get out of the way.
Charles O. Stones Intermediate Center, home of the CSIC Wolves. One of two intermediate centers in Garden City, Kansas, CSIC houses over 500 fifth and sixth grade students. CSIC has a strong building leader who is in her 17th year as building principal for CSIC. CSIC houses a newcomer program, and we celebrate diversity. Our district serves students who speak over 24 languages and are from 31 different countries. Charles Stones is part of the district-wide one-to-one technology initiative, and all fifth grade students have their own iPads. CSIC provides a rigorous curriculum as well as multiple problem-solving task days throughout the year. The students of Charles Stones are offered both math and reading interventions daily. CSIC has a student council where students learn to be leaders and positive role models. Charles Stones has many connections to community organizations who provide educational enrichment opportunities. Charles Stones has a committee dedicated to creating exciting and educational family engagement activities. In an effort to focus on doing what's right, CSIC has monthly positive behavior recognition events. Students can join many extracurricular activities including choir, robotics, and writing cycling books. Big Brothers and Big Sisters is available to any student four days a week after school with parental permission. CSIC, because we believe learning should be fun.
It's our new promotional video. And something we want to thank technology for, Michelle's using NearPod, which is a program you guys purchased for us, it's awesome.
I have it, but it's not. That's our mascot on the first day of school. He just looks a little creepy. By himself.
He's new this year.
Open house, we had luau. I don't, I know we had a lot of kids.
Katie, you want to talk about that? You helped organize it.
No. I feel we had over 500 people come. We served just about that. We provided them with dinner, fun and games, and then a meet and greet afterwards, and we have had nothing but positive comments towards that, and I can only imagine it will get better next year and then the years after that because of the community involvement. It was super cool, and it was probably one of the best ones that we've had since I've been in the building. And thank God, the weather was beautiful.
It was really hot.
It was hot, but it was fun, and the kids enjoyed it, and so that's all that mattered. So, that was it.
A lot of these slides are where the communities come in and join us. The library came in, they did fifth grade presentations in the library. Real men, real leaders. This was their volunteer day for the Humane Society.
They also came in and helped us. We had a fundraiser for one of our staff members whose husband passed away this year, and they were there after the garage sale closed for four hours, helping us pack and take all the stuff to the Salvation Army. So, it was pretty awesome.
The drum line from the college came for Health Week and played for the kids at lunch. This is the robotics competition they went to in Ness City.
And we have one team that qualified for state.
We've done Take Your Parents to PE Week twice, and the parents come in, and you can tell that they've been working out more than. And we had the officer or the author Jefferson Knapp come in and talk to us, and I had to put this picture up there because of the guy who's in the back. You guys remember Menudo with their sexy cap? It's the only picture I could find with him in it, so.
Sorry.
We had, I believe, nine scholarships for the YMCA this year, for our teachers giving students these scholarships. We had more than any other school in district, I do believe.
I don't know.
Yeah. We joined the Christmas parade this year.
Can I make Mallory talk a little bit about that?
Yeah.
We have a first-year teacher who organized this for our building, and we had how many over 80 kids show up?
Yeah, I think it was close to 100. Several of us had been at parades over the summer, and I remember going to the homecoming parade that the high school had with my kids, and two of my kids said, "I wish my school was in that." And so, I went and asked, you know, to find out if our school had plans to participate in any parades, and everybody was like, "No, but go for it." So, you know, I emailed out and I got a good response from a lot of teachers, so we just decided we'd do our best, and we put our feet in the water, and it worked out well. We had a lot of kids come, and they were really, really excited to be in a parade for the first time, so.
And the kids handed out candy canes and cocoa mix.
Yes. Instead of candy, we did, we stuck with the Polar Express theme, and we did hot chocolate and candy cane packets.
There were so many, you cannot see the car trailer behind them that we had there, so. The football team has come, they did pizza with players one day. They ate lunch with the kids, and you would have thought it was the Kansas City Chiefs. They were standing there signing autographs. I finally had to scoot them out of, because lunchtime was over.
Do you have the one about them going to, oh, sorry.
And then our kids went and supported them on, I don't watch football, sorry, was it the night before their final game?
Laura and I did.
Laura.
Yeah, it was the last game of the season that, was it home game?
No, last home game.
Oh, last home game?
Yes.
Several of you guys were there.
They had the umpire Todd Tishner come in and talk to them, and he was handing out We did reading and math night. We had almost 200 people show.
Catherine, do you remember?
Reading and math.
Reading and math night?
How many people were there?
I don't remember exactly how many, but we had a really good turnout, and it was the first time, we're actually going to be doing some changes with it because with family engagement, we're going to make a little bit of a change in the fall, but we have a really good parental support this year, and so it's really nice to see the parents come out with their kids and get a little bit more of an idea of what we do inside the classroom and how they can enrich that outside the classroom.
And it was the day before Halloween.
Yes, we let them dress up.
Yeah, they wore costumes. We are now doing Second Chance Breakfast. Our breakfast numbers have gone from 165 served per day to 315. And the lunch ladies serve these kids in five minutes in the hallway. It is amazing to watch them.
We're serving about 200 breakfasts at Second Chance every morning. We just stole the idea from high school and the middle school.
The kids love it, absolutely love it.
We do Freddie fundraising nights, the staff goes in, let people in and out the doors, clean the tables. We've done Red Ribbon Week. Mr. Reed goes and has all the kids sign their red ribbon and put their goal on it, and he takes all of his spare time and goes and hangs them in the hallways. The Fannie County Emergency Management has come in and taught CPR and choking. Health night, we had 200 and about 15 people. We had different organizations come in, they were doing blood draws, BMI checks. And Big Brothers and Big Sisters, one of the other people they had come in was a barber.
Josh.
Hi. I don't know how to say the last name. He's Heinz. The next robotics workshop, or the last robotics workshop was October 27th. They do this in the after-school program, but they also have kids that come that are not in the after-school program. Walk to School Day, we had parents come and walking with our kids inside since it was so cold outside and foggy, and yeah. The police came, did a presentation for the fifth grade when they were reading Old And we have a game for you guys. Do you want to know, are you smarter than a fifth grader? So, choose a category.
You want to start with Ms. Boris?
I was going to start right here.
You can go first, Ms. Taylor.
Social studies for 200. The Austrian doctor who introduced a very influential method of examining a person's mind called psychoanalysis. Sigmund Freud. Very good. Yay! All right.
Okay, we're done.
That's it.
You want to try, who else has some guts?
All of my science.
Oh, you want to try? Okay, I'll go back. I'll go back. Science for 200. Photosynthesis in plants generally involves the green pigment.
Do math for 200.
What is the formula for volume of a quadrilateral?
If I'm correct, this is a fifth grade question. These are all fifth grade questions that they have to know.
I went to law school for a reason.
I'm with you, I didn't take back.
Make tons of wisdom.
So, we just wanted to share some of the things our kids have to do as well. So, we wanted to let you know, kind of, we were kind of challenged at the beginning of the year to increase our community involvement, and so we wanted to share how our school has been doing that. And what's neat is it's not done by one person, it's done by all of these people. Our staff has embraced it, they've taken it on, not the leadership team in the building. The staff has done that. So, I think you needed to know that. So, that's our school.
Any questions?
Can I have the kids come, I forgot, you know, we're supposed to offer these pins to the kids that come, and I'm not doing my job. Do you guys wanna come get a pin and shake our hand? Thanks for coming. Thanks for sitting down. I've been the one leaving, I think. Do you wanna grab an extra one for your friend Matt? Just grab one for him. He'll be up here.
And Vice President, one other thing before, this is Ms. Smith Lee, she has shared that it's her intention to retire at the end of the year. Seventeen years at Charles Stone.
Sixteen, actually.
Okay, how many in the district?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, so, awesome, thank you for your service.
Thank you. (applause) All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Okay. Okay, it's been moved and segmented for the consent agenda. Do you need any discussion?
I don't like E3, part of E3.
Don't like either what?
Part of E3, someone's letter actually leaves for retirement.
I told you we had to vote on that.
Shall we just not vote on it tonight?
Yeah, let's move that to next year.
I'll vote for that, too.
All right, it's been moved and segmented, no discussion. Let's vote, and all in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, where's your man? Any non? Okay, that's good. All right, we're ready for discussion items. First off, individual plans of study.
I brought counselors here tonight, and a couple principals came in support as well as their staff, but before I get started, two things. One, it is National School Counseling Appreciation Week, so the timing of having them present for IPS, I think, is spot on, so we thank counselors for everything they do. They go sight unseen and very unsung heroes in our district, so appreciate all they do. And then the second thing, as we talk about individual plans of study tonight, I want to point out Janet's presentation, all of that community involvement, so much of it was career-related. So again, kids are getting exposures to a lot of careers and what that might look like, so when they get to seventh grade, they have some background knowledge about possibilities, and that's the whole point. So just to refresh our, individual plans of study or IPS is a state board outcome, and the outcome says that every student grade seven through 12 will have a plan of study. There are five state board outcomes, six if you have the bonus one, a little bit in civic engagement. But essentially, the board says it's so important that we prepare our kids for life after high school and that they're successful for life after high school, and an individual plan of study will start the process of that track. I think I talked about this, students with this preparation will be ready for success in the post-secondary world. And I've given presentations before on what our post-secondary success rate looks like in terms of kids who graduate and go on to post-secondary, but this actually is just kind of like the waiting pool of kids to start thinking about their future. I mean, I, we still have kids who are in career academies after high school, rightfully so, that are getting their feet wet and trying to make a decision, so when they leave the high school, they have a pretty good idea of what they may or may not be successful doing when they leave. So I'd like to first introduce, we're gonna, I'm gonna have the counselors introduce themselves as they present tonight. We have the whole middle school bunch here to talk about their plans of study.
Mary Guiman, and I'm a counselor at Horace Good Middle School.
Kelly Pitts, I'm a school counselor at Kenneth Henderson Middle School.
Linda Kane, I'm at Horace Good Middle School.
Rhea Dennis, I'm at Horace Good and Kenneth Henderson.
Okay, and so counselors and teachers, we meet with students twice a year to work on their individual plans of study. Career Cruising is the program that we use for students to develop their IPS.
And counselors develop the criteria for students to follow in the seventh and eighth grade during middle school years. Students are exploring different careers, and this is the curriculum that we have set
Teachers meet with parents during parent-teacher conferences, and they explain the IPS process. Parents are given a username and a password so that they can access their child's information. We give that through a letter to parents, and that allows parents and their child to then, at home, be able to explore different career options, scholarships that are available, colleges that are options for students in their future. And then we also give them a handout that explains partly what an IPS is and how Career Cruising meets each component of an IPS, and it goes into detail explaining each component, so.
One of the things that we're interested in is data collection, too, and one of the things we do is we have a career fair every other year, and we involve as many community members as we can get, and we organize it, and we use the data from the Career Cruising to help us decide and help the students decide which career options they want to explore during this day of exploration. And the other thing that we do is every year, we make sure that the students have completed 100% of those activities that were on that one page, to make sure that they've done all of the activities and they've explored in the right places, they've, you know, looked at different careers, they know what their learning styles are, they know what their skills are, they know what their interests are and how they match, and bring it together into career possibilities and start looking at high school courses.
Okay, so we, after, the four of us met and decided we wanted to improve for next year, and these are some ideas that we had, that we would invite the parents, when we go into the classroom with the teachers and develop their IPSs, we'd invite parents to come, provide parents with the printout of the students' results, and then provide computers in the counseling area, so students and parents can access their IPSs during parent-teacher conferences.
Any questions about the middle school folks? Yes?
Just one minute. I think the third or fourth slide you talked about, you guys meet with the parents during conferences, so what do you do, how do you meet the parents that don't go to conferences?
Send letters home with all the information.
Invite them into school, or, I mean, how do you meet with them? So you send the letter, and then what happens?
At this point, we've kind of left it up to them, and that's why we decided what we want to do is carry it a little bit further.
That's why.
And actually invite them into the classroom. We send the letters home, we, the science teachers in our building are the ones that hand the letters out with their information, because we go into the science classrooms and they're familiar with the program. And the ones that don't come to conferences, then we send those letters home to the stu, with the students later.
But we're trying to improve that.
We're trying to do more parent outreach, because we know that that makes a huge difference.
Garden City High School? Come in.